All right, I call this special city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Here.
Councilor Joyner.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Denton.
Here.
Councilor Pelham.
Here.
Councilor Holloway.
Here.
All right, this time we're going to allow Dr. Manker to present our item one.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to thank you guys today for coming out for the special meeting. Tonight, we have the Robert Bob Group. They are here to present the fiscal turnaround plan for the city of Hopewell. We initially put out a RFP for two objectives. One, the first objective was to establish a PMO. The second objective is to acquire accounting remediation services to help with our past audits. And as a result, there was an outside group who vetted the RFP. The selection and recommendation is the Robert Bob Group. They are here tonight to present to you their plan. And please allow them to get through the actual presentation and then there will be opportunity to go deeper into the technical proposal. Okay, and at this time, we have tonight, Mr. Robert Bob, who is the president and CEO, Heather Ness, and Jack Reagan. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Robert Bob. I'm the president and CEO of the Robert Bob Group. I want to thank you for this proposed opportunity to provide financial services and accounting services, project management services for the city of Petersburg. Who are we as a team?
Petersburg.
I mean, I'm sorry, for the city of Hopewell. You know, sometimes I can't remember whether I'm down the road, up the road, or here, so... But we're very pleased to be here tonight. Who are we as a team? We are strong. We are committed. We are experienced subject matter experts, both in local government operations, in local government finance, and in local government accounting. In fact, we are, in fact, subject matter experts in those areas. What we bring that are, in terms of how we connect to you as an elected officials. I have been an elected official, so I've sat on your side reviewing the work of city administrators. We also have another elected official on our team, Claire, and she was a county executive. So we have on our team individuals who can connect to you as the policymakers of the city because we've been in one role or another in your place as elected officials. Secondarily, we can connect to the city manager and her team because we have managed cities across the United States. I have managed a number of cities, not just the District of Columbia Government, Calumdu, Michigan, Santa Ana, California, and a number of other jurisdictions. And we have Claire, who has also been a county executive and a city manager. Both of us are members of the International City County Management Association. So from that standpoint, we bring a connection to the fact that we understand the importance of the elected officials and the policymakers that you all are and that we have been on the side that we can advise the city manager and her team on a number of issues that impact your government. So we bring those two connections. We are not here as a team to study the issues. That's not our role. That's not what our proposal is. Our proposal is not a study. We are here to solve the issues, not to study the issues. We are not here to study nor accept other consultants' work. We appreciate other consultants' work. We value the work of other consultants, but we're not here to just accept and implement something that other consultants have provided. Because were we to be contracted by the city, it's our fiduciary responsibility to drive the processes that are important to you, to the city. We are here to, we will draw our own conclusions. We will draw our own pathway to success and turnover. And we will advise the city manager that when we are performing our work, if in fact, the team that she has performing that work are not capable of taking the city to the next level, then we will advise the city manager in that regard as well. Because talent management for the success of your community is significantly important. All of the financial issues impacting the city, all of those issues. We've seen those issues before. They're not foreign to us. Each city have, each city that we have worked in, we have left them in a stronger financial position than they were prior to our arrival. We can point to East Point, Georgia, where that city had not completed its cash balances for almost a year and a half, had not completed its annual financial audit when we arrived. And we were successful in getting, in solving both of those issues. Then we left the city of East Point, Georgia, just one of the most prosperous cities in, outside of College Park in Georgia, as a result of the work that we performed. We just recently completed a year and a half of work for the city of Charlottesville. As you all recall, Charlottesville had all of the protests recently. I mean, a few years ago, they had a number of issues. And so the mayor and the city council hired our firm to provide interim city management services to the city of Charlottesville for the last 21 months. And I can tell you, if you have a relationship with any of the councilors in Charlottesville, they will attest to the work that our interim city manager did under my supervision, as well as Heather and other members of our team. As a matter of fact, they almost gave him a golden resolution. And so we're very proud of the work that we've done, that we did in the city of Charlottesville. We also, you know, just down the street, I made the Freudian slip earlier, but Petersburg, Virginia, when we arrived in Petersburg, they could not even make payroll. They're on the verge of bankruptcy. And as a matter of fact, if there was a state law that was provided, the state of Petersburg would have been in Chapter Nine bankruptcy. And I can tell you that we put a team on the ground. We changed, we switched out the management. We put in policy practices and procedures. We brought our own financial team, our interim city manager, et cetera. And today, the city of Petersburg is one of the financially strong municipalities. They went from junk bond status to over forty-plus million dollars in its undesignated fund balance as we speak. And they're on the verge of, they just left New York rating agency, so they're on the verge of moving from a single A, hopefully they'll get their double A rating. But when we were there, they were triple B rating. So the issues that we see are issues that can be solved. Because as we see, there's a three-legged stool that, when we begin our work, we, we, we will make sure that that three-legged stool is strong. And where we find weaknesses in it, we're going to report to the city manager and we're going to report to the city council. Because if we don't get that three-legged stool right, then the financial problems in terms of we're getting your audit done will continue to exacerbate. Now, three-legged stools are this. The city's financial operations must be strong in terms of policies, practices, procedures, and a staff. You know, this is not where we are today, given where the city is. This is not, this is not training camp. This is an opportunity where we have to bring our best to the game. You have to understand the financial operations. You have to understand how municipal finances, how municipal finances are important to the city. You have to understand the budget systems, the stimulus munis system, which we have experts in, in the regard. But that first stool is the office of the city's financial operations. Has to be strong, has to be talented, and it has to have good, strong policies, practices, and procedures, and it must report, both to the city manager, as well as to the city council and to the community. That's the first leg. The second leg is the office of the treasurer. Plays an important role in bringing together and managing and providing the various financial operations for the city. Now, I understand that's an elected position. We had some challenges in Petersburg with the elected treasurer. And some of those duties are no longer provided to the city of Petersburg by that treasurer's office, but the treasurer's office must have strong policies, practices, procedures, and provide the financials that the city needs. And so we will meet with the city treasurer, we will help. I don't want to make any assumptions, but that is an important part of that three-legged stool. The second part. The third part is the school system. I can speak to the schools because I ran, I was an emergency financial manager of the fifth largest school district in the United States. So understand the importance of the school district and its finances.
And I was an auditor.
And you were the auditor. And in addition to that, I was a school board member. I was president, an elected president of the DC School Board. Don't laugh, Councilmember Harris. And so the school system, financial operation, although they're elected, different elected body, is an important role, plays a very important role. And so we, in our work, we are going to be vigilant in our efforts to make sure that those three-legged stools are, that it creates a very strong foundation upon which the financial systems of the city is balanced, so that we can get those audits completed. And so we're excited. And again, we're not here to make, we're not here to study the issues. Were we to be approved, we're here to do the work and to bring a team on the table and to bring our team. And when you go through our proposal, this is the first time I've had a proposal where I have so many CPAs, so I don't know how I'm going to manage with Jack all of the CPAs that we have on this team. Our program manager's office has certified program managers. They've been certified. They understand the importance of having a charter that guides how the program management office operates and functions and will function. And Heather will speak to that a little bit later. And our program management professional will be on the ground every day, managing this, helping to manage the diversity of issues that we have to, that we have to address. So we believe the city will be well-served by choosing a leading and experienced team that has the resources. We have the knowledge of jurisdictions and department operations. And we know that we can be successful in guiding this project. We have, we've been working to improve the financial operations of many jurisdictions around the country. We're strong in budget. I grew up in a budget office in the city. I actually grew up in the municipal water department. And I was telling the city manager that she and I have something in common. When I was the appointed city manager, I was the appointed city manager on a four-to-three boat. I served that city for nine years. So my constance of the city manager is, you're the city manager. Stand up, take the bull by the horn, and run with it. Every day, you'll be successful. And I believe every, I believe that she will be successful. And for the period of time that we're here, we're going to help guide. We're going to help provide whatever bumps and bruises we've encountered in doing our journey over the last several years of managing cities. I would also say that one of the areas that will definitely have to be stronger is that we need to have the city council finance committee actively involved in helping to communicate the financial operations of the city with the city. Although we were reporting to the city council, every jurisdiction that we've been in, there've been a city council finance committee. I asked the city manager about it, and I noticed the city manager's finance committee. But, you know, we may make a little turn in the road and recommend maybe it's the city council's finance committee. And then make it stronger. And I would also say that, I was telling one of the councilors, we, just last year, Heather and I, with our team from Accenture, we did a very, we completed a very comprehensive finance and efficiency study for the Richmond City Council, which looked at every area of the city that the city councilors needed to have its fiduciary responsibilities for. A little bit different from the city administration, but it was a city council-driven process. And we're in the process of helping the city council to implement some of those findings and recommendations. As a result, we've had, after our study last year, we conducted a one-day seminar with the city council. And just two weeks ago, Heather and I conducted another seminar with the city council just to make sure that as they look at their policies, their practices, where the city councilors wanted to go in the future, that they have a program and their plan. And I might add, and Heather can affirm this, but most of the work around, not just their policies, but how the city council in Richmond would drive the budget process. And of course, as you know, there's the strong mayor, right? So there's a little, so we say it'll be there, and there's a little kabuki dance that has to take place, but you know, it's a, you know, it's a delicate balance. But what we tell everyone, and what I learned as a city manager, the final fiduciary responsibility for the city and the city government is not the city manager, it's not the mayor and a strong mayor form of government, it's the city council. At the end of the day, it's the city council. And I don't mean to be preachy, I'm just saying that just the way it is. You know, sometimes as city managers, we say, "Well, you know, we're in charge of that finance." Well, you're in charge, you're making the recommendation. You know, we propose that city managers, but the council disposes. And that budget belongs to the city council. It doesn't belong to the city manager. It's the city council's budget. Now, we have to bring strong budget policies, practices, procedures, information to the councilors so that it can make an informed decision. And also, then we, as city managers, we have to make sure that a team that's behind us are capable of standing up and providing strong financial policies so that the city manager is not left hanging out there. But at the end of the day, that budget doesn't belong to the city manager. And these financial operation problems that we have here rest with the city councilors. And that's why you all are driving this process. And we would be honored to, to help you. I'd like to introduce Heather.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm working on it. See if I can move this along here. Hold on. Uh-oh, hold on. Bob, is it to you? There we go. Bob pretty much covered all of this, so I'm going to go ahead and get started with our team. First, since I've not met most of you, I think you've met everyone otherwise at other occasions. My name is Heather Ness. I'm a principal with the Robert Bob Group. I like to joke around in scenarios like this, that Jack is my old boss at KPMG. And actually brought me into municipal government about ten, fifteen years ago. And Bob is my current boss. So I can tell you without a doubt, I have worked with both of them before, and I am here and prepared and ready to lead with them. First thing we're going to cover today is our team. How we are organized in order to do the work that you need us to do. Now, it's a little small up here. Hopefully you guys have presentations and printouts. But essentially, we have project management office that I'll be leading. And then we will have an Objective One team and Objective Two team. Objective One is assigned with PMO, deliverable stakeholder management, business process reengineering, assessment of current state, redesign of future state, the organization change that has to go with that. And then Jack is going to talk through the Objective Two, which is the accounting remediation services. And that is staffed with both of our sides and team as well. Bob did speak to many of our subject matter experts who will be joining us. I think just some things to point out. Bob did correctly state, "I am a certified project management professional." And of course, I am also a certified CISA, Certified Information Systems Auditor. And where this becomes important is where we're looking a lot at things like munis as I work hand-in-hand with our munis expert. I'm going to be looking at how that system is configured, set up, how the controls are set in place, segregation duties, those kinds of things, to make sure that we get that back right on track and usable. We had a conversation this morning, for example, about bad data in makes bad data out. So there'll probably be an initiative, you know, to clean some of the data up so that you guys can rely on it in a way that you want to rely on it. So that's where my qualifications come in. I have been both an auditor from an IT perspective and a fixer. So I have worked with Bob in the assessment of Richmond. I actually came this afternoon, I was sitting with the Richmond DEC, which is their Emergency Communications Center, as we merge some of their operations to make them a little bit more efficient. First time I've actually got to sit in on a 911 call center, so that was an exciting day for me. And I've also worked with organizations like DC Water, from both an audit standpoint as well as an implementation standpoint, where I've done quite a bit of work in municipal governments, State of Maryland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, District of Columbia has been in big systems implementations, a lot of accounting systems, a lot of organizational change for accounting systems, and a lot of business process reengineering for accounting systems. I've done a great deal of my work in that. And what I was known for, prior to leaving KPMG, where I had a 16-year career, before coming to Bob, was leading large transformation initiatives. So standing up these big PMOs, creating the project charters, identifying stakeholders, figuring out how to enroll and communicate with stakeholders in a way that everyone can understand and follow along. Just as important as the change itself and the operational improvements is the fact that everyone buys into them and understands the change and is willing to use the change. Also hugely important, and we'll talk a little bit as we get started around cultural change, which I do quite a bit of. Working with me is Tammy Hunt, who's also a certified PMP. She'll be, as Bob correctly stated, the person who will be here running the PMO office. I will be here probably about 50% of the time and virtually the other 50%, as I am home taking care of my son. And then that team will lead business process reengineering. And I'm going to walk a little bit through that, and then I'm going to leave the Objective Two team. A couple other things to talk about with our subject matter expertise. Someone else we've all worked with in our history is Oluwodebo. He's the former CFO of DC Water. I met him there, and then we worked together on a team to turn around Romada, our metro transportation system. Gosh, I think that was probably 2016, where he was the controller and I was the consultant he hired for the CFO and brought the team along to fix their financial business processes back in the day. Also Jerry Johnson, with great amount of utility experts, experience. And Justin Starrett, who's the former CFO of the city of Boston and our partner at Accenture. I've just recently moved off an engagement with him, working in the city of Richmond. And he'll be working with me, actually, on the city of Richmond engagement I just discussed, where I got to take a look at the 911 center. And then finally, Bob mentioned Claire Collins, who is both an elected official and former city manager. All right, I'm going to start stepping us through the approach and how we will do this. Again, I will walk through Phase One, and then Jack will go ahead and walk us through Phase Two, or I guess Team Two. We've actually chosen to do these, just given the urgency of everything in line. So there's nothing that is, you know, Phase One is not happening before Phase Two. It's just two different teams. We'll be working hand-in-hand and tandem and aligned. So as Bob correctly mentioned, one of the most important things in any project is the project charter. The project charter codifies the project at 10. It codifies how we communicate with our stakeholders. As a matter of fact, a communications plan that's done in tandem with the project charter actually identifies who our communication stakeholders are. Of course, you all are, are a number of our stakeholders. We have administration members that are stakeholders. We have residents that are stakeholders. We have administrative professionals who work for the city of Hopewell that are stakeholders. And we'll go through identifying those, how to communicate with those stakeholders, and set our targets and our goals. And we will do that hand-in-hand with you. And as we go through the project charter, we'll go through each one of those goals. And then not only how we intend to accomplish them, but how we intend to measure them and track them. If you don't have the numbers, you can't measure your progress. So you need to identify what your key performance indicators are at the base. And then as we move through this engagement, and then as we transition to you guys and you move through without us, you should be able to track those same indicators as you move forward to track your progress from where you are now. So one of the things we'll do, and you know, we heard a little bit already about, you know, we don't trust the numbers that we've got. Well, okay, let's go through, let's clean up the system, let's clean up the numbers, and let's figure out how to move forward. The last piece of a project charter is identifying your project objectives. And your check should always be in the engagement as we move through this. as we move through this, is what we're doing, aligning, and coming hand in hand with each one of those objectives. So if it's not helping us meet our objectives, okay, it's a nice to have. We want to stay fully aligned with what's required, what's important, what turns everything around. And those projects, those primary project objectives will be identified first and everything will be tied to those. The last piece I want to talk about here before I move through our business process reengineering and our org change is the idea of a war room.
Oh, a what?
A war room. I don't like the terminology of PMO, Project Management Office. It's not... We aren't just observing. We're doing. We are on the ground. We're blocking and tackling. We're solving problems. We're picking them up and we're helping. And we're creating and learning based on what has come in as current state, what we're learning from you guys as a city and as an organization, and how we can move everything into future state and how we pick those up and block and tackle from there. The first thing that we are going to deliver with you guys after the project charter, the stakeholder analysis and communication plan, is a current state assessment. So as Bob correctly stated, you know, the trust but verify. We will take every report that's ever been written. We will read them. We've actually already familiarized ourselves with the Alvarez Report. And everything that's done beforehand, we will validate, verify, and we will move forward. We will take a look at what the current state is. And then what we do is we look at that gap. So we work with you all and determine what you want your future state to be. And then we close the gap. And one of the things we do quite a lot of is business process reengineering, financial business process, operational process reengineering. You know, so you assess the current, you move through to the future, and then train up on what those future processes are. We have a team that comes through that potentially will look at, you know, swim lane, VISO process diagrams, standard operating procedures, standards, policies, all of those to make sure that everything's on solid footing moving forward. And then lastly, when everything's done, of course, once there's training, there's a transition meeting that is done. With that, I'm going to let Jack take the podium and talk a little bit about Objective Two.
It's tough being the caboose on this train with as competent as Mr. Bob and Ms. Nessar. It's very humbling to be following them. My name is Jack Regan. I'm a managing director with UHY. I may look familiar to you. I met with you guys earlier in the, I think it was late winter, early spring, about some potential internal audit work down here. Same guy. Appreciate the opportunity to come back down and talk to y'all today. I am the accounting fixer on this. And that's the team that I'm going to bring with me. And, you know, we have an integrated team. But what our experience has shown is that if you have the same people that are trying to fix the stuff going forward and fix the stuff that has occurred in the past, neither one gets done.
Right.
So having this division and having two objectives, one that Heather's going to lead that has a very much windshield approach, you know, that is going to be looking to the future state, having a second person that's got the rearview mirror approach, where we're going to be looking and cleaning and fixing what has occurred in the past, is the way that this is successful. For those of you that are movie fans, I'm going to use a movie line here, where we cross the streams from Ghostbusters is in that initial project walkthrough where my team needs to have an understanding of how the transactions are initiated, processed, and recorded so we can figure out how to fix the old stuff. So while we talk about, you know, division of labor, the one place where we're going to cross over is in those initial meetings where we're obtaining the understanding of your processes to initiate, process, and record the transactions that ultimately go into Munis. As I was mentioning to someone earlier this evening as well, governments are predominantly a cash business. Everything goes through the bank accounts. So as we kick this off, the first thing that we're going to be doing is going back through all the old open years and looking at the status of every single bank account and the reconciliations that have been performed on every single one of those. And by cleaning up and rolling forward all those old bank reconciliations, a lot of the work to clean up the books and records of the city will naturally fall out of that bank reconciliation cleanup process. So we will be working very closely with the treasurer and others who may be the ones that actually control bank accounts. And we know and are very sensitive to the structure of municipal governments in Virginia, those that have statutory authority and know that the treasurer is supposed to be the one that has custody of all of the bank accounts. Prior experience has shown that may not necessarily be the case. There may be others that are randomly out there. And that is a natural outgrowth of a project like this where that gets consolidated. We're doing some work with a local government, smaller local government down in southwestern Virginia where we've seen that case, where a couple of bank accounts that were not opened in accordance with the constitutional principles in Virginia were open. So that cleaning up the bank account is going to be very critical. We're going to coordinate very closely with your external audit firm. They are going to be a key stakeholder in this so that we want to have a meeting with them very early so that they understand what our approach to remediation is going to be so we can get a copy of what was called their prepared by client list, make sure that we are performing the reconciliations in a way that they will accept upon audit. And I'm still, even though everything's going to be electronic, I still think of old work paper binders, you know, three-ring binders and such. We will prepare all of the audit schedules. And we will sit in all of the audit status meetings. And we will be the ones that help staff as they are fielding questions from the auditors as we bring 19, 20, 21, 22, 23 current through that process. One other thing that I do want to highlight as well, it's not just bringing your financial records current, it's also your grant records. Because if you remember, as part of your annual financial statement audit, you get an annual, what's called, single audit of your grant programs. So it's going to be, in addition to making sure that the financial records reconcile, we're also going to be looking at how the grant records reconcile through all that and be there. And actually, one of the things that's on my radar screen from some of the earlier, I think, newspaper articles that I've seen has been something around the Comprehensive Services Act. We're going to look specifically at that, see what we can do early to bring that record keeping current so that some of those funds can begin to be released by the state. So we've got that grant expertise that resides on my team as well. So we're going to have this integrated approach from process. We're going to be fixed on bringing everything current. We're going to closely coordinate with staff. We're going to be closely coordinating with the auditors and do our job to fix these records so that when the new processes that arise out of the first work stream are implemented, the data that you've got that currently resides in the ledger, so when you start generating the new data through the new processes, that's clean. All the old data's clean. So we're starting at a good place when these new controls and the new data that's coming through those new controls are in place. I can't tell you how excited I am on behalf of UHY about the opportunity to work with the city. I feel like I'm coming a little bit full circle here. This was actually one of the first jobs that I worked on as a graduate out of the University of Richmond back in 1989. So appreciate the opportunity to serve the city and its citizens. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Bob for some concluding remarks.
Thank you. And we'll be available for questions. I just want to make one other final comment is that as we work on this, everything that we do will be advising and will be running our work through the city manager. So the city manager will probably see us more frequently than she wants to as she tries to manage the rest of the city. But every report, every issue that we have, every, everything that we're going to move forward, our first communication will be with and through the city manager so that the city manager is always on top of the work that we're doing through this process. So we're available for... Oh, not quite done?
Nope. No, no, we're not. You guys just always want to know how we're going to get started. So we thought we'd put together a little, a couple of points on what you can expect when we first get started, what we'll be asking for, how we'll be doing our first several days. First, starting with the city status. First couple of things we'll be looking for, financial audit reporting, status assessment, including material issues, obstacles, viability of current delivery schedule, including an assessment of past audit issues and whether or not those have been resolved. Second, assessment of the city and any component units' current financial condition, liquidity, ability to meet obligations and provide essential city services, any structural budget balances, items like that. An assessment of the city's staff's ability to process administrative and financial transactions and indemnification of staffing needs, including accounting and financial reporting, capabilities to timely and accurate process, record financial and accounting transactions, strength of accounting and financial controls, and ability to perform critical reconciliations, business processes that directly impact the financial statements. And those include, as Jack prior mentioned, the cash reconciliations, any specific analysis regarding the city's wastewater treatment facility rebates owed and use of coronavirus relief funds from the federal government. And then, as Bob started, talk about the series of consultations that we will be conducting with city officials, city manager, city council, mayor, treasurer, finance director, component unit, financial leadership, external auditor, financial advisor, auditor of public accounts, and any other relevant stakeholders. One thing to mention is how we will be communicating with each of you. And Bob did mention that we'll be working pretty daily with the city manager. But we will set up either weekly or every other week, status meetings with each of you so you can hear directly from us what it is that you need. And the way I usually like to do that is we will agree on an agenda ahead of time so that we will come prepared to those meetings with the items that you would like to hear. And anything that you should ask that we're not prepared to answer during those meetings, we'll parking lot and bring back to you within a couple of days. And that being said, a couple of things about why we believe we can and will succeed, which I'll just leave up as we go through your questions.
Okay. First slide I had was Counselor Pelham, then Vice Mayor Gore.
Mr. Bob, how you doing? Question. Did I hear you say we don't have a finance committee? The city council doesn't have a finance committee? Did you say that is...
Yeah, what we find is that in just about every jurisdiction, there's a city council finance committee that's made up of council members. And, but the city managers are part of that. But it's generally, it's the city council's finance committee of city council. There is a, just about in every jurisdiction that...
So it's just a terminology for you. You call it the city manager's finance committee. The city council calls it their committee. Is that what you're saying? It doesn't matter?
Yeah. Every jurisdiction is set up. But generally, it's a committee, a finance committee that is appointed within the body of the council. And then the staff reports to the city council's finance committee.
Yeah. Yeah, I was wondering until she said that last statement, some of the problem with not knowing in the past. I was happy to hear her say that the finance committee would be a part of the briefings so that council would get the same ear. It doesn't have to be interpreted and then spit out. It just has to be everybody's hearing the same thing.
Yes, we'll work with the city manager in terms of, you know, what are the cadence for meetings of the city council's finance committee? You know, but I think the city council's finance, in every jurisdiction, the city council's finance committee has always been actively involved.
Yeah, has to be, yes. And you said you're not going to automatically, I guess, accept the findings of the other, I guess, the other company that came in and gave us like a roadmap of how we needed to cure our problems initially. But one of the things that themes this in every audit that the city has seen is that we have internal, what do you call those things? I should know that word. Internal controls. I'm so sick of that word. Not sick of it, but it's been fed to me for 10 years and we still have them. And so you don't have to study something that you see repeated like that, of course, correct.
Yeah, I mean, all of your, all of your financial policies should be, you know, once we review them, they all should be updated. The current financial...
That's a good word, should be.
Should be, current financial policies. JFOA has kind of a roadmap for jurisdictions on financial policies. We have financial policies in other jurisdictions that we can, you know, bring to bear. I mean, bring to the, you know, enter the conversation. But every, you know, you just have to determine what are the financial policies we can help you with a template, looking at what your current, what those financial policies are. But I will also say that you can have the most beautiful financial policies, well-written, the whole nine yards, as it were. But the execution, the implementation is vitally important. One of the, the fact that the city manager[1629.34] One of the, the fact that the city manager has an IT background, I mean, they have to implement things in the role that she has, former role, so all, you know, what, what we don't, what we don't want, and what we would like to see avoided, is to have this beautiful set of policies, practices, procedures, all of those are important, right? They're all well-written, but if they're not executed and followed, and with a performance behind them, you know, it's just another set of policies you can put in the library, and you can say, well, you have nice policies, you have nicely-written policies, and you've just got an award because you have nice-written policies. You know, it's just, this is execution. I mean, the city is at a point where it needs to get its financial house in order, and that's what our message is. We're not here to study all of these issues. We're here to boots on the ground, working with the city manager, getting the, you know, getting these, moving the dial, as it were, or moving the process forward, and I think that's, you know, you've been in this situation for a long time, and so now is the time we would like, we would like to be part of...
Performance.
Advancing, you know? It's, it's either in baseball or something, it's either perform or move out, right? So it's, it's all about performance and communication.
And the other thing is the Cefers, they are very important, I guess, to everyone, but especially to the school system. We have a Head Start program here that's about to maybe potentially lose accreditation because we have, the government is still waiting for the audits, so I appreciate, of course, that being done more than ASAP. Is there a word for that?
Yes, and, and I think that that's going to be one of the, the critical success factors in all of this, and is to bring all of those grant audits current. They have been historically done concurrently with the financial statement audits. One of the things that, at least I would like to brainstorm with the incumbent auditors is a way that those may be bifurcated, so that there is a, that the grant audits can get done, maybe a program-specific audit can get done in lieu of the financial statement audit, for a Head Start program where the funding agency is saying, you know, get these audits done or else we're going to cut off the, the money. There, there are some options that we can brainstorm as we are working to clean up the financial records, to get some of the grant audits accelerated, so that funding is not lost.
Yeah, well, that's, that's an important one.
Yep.
And with our government today, they don't have any patience with a lot of programs, probably Head Start is one of them, but we need to make sure that program is around for those kids that, and parents that definitely...
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Matt, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor Gore, then Councilor Joyner, Holloway, and then myself.
All right, so thank you again for being here. A few points in the presentation, I think is key, that we are told the staff that are not able to perform. That's been one of my biggest gripes in regards to helping us get past this hump is we do not have enough staff in positions in which they are trained to be able to, or have the, the knowledge to perform the task, and for whatever reason, there hasn't been a push by majority of council to actually do something about that, in terms of making sure that, you know, people have a chance to get trained and perform, if they don't perform, they have to go, because they're holding us up, and also the issues with staff in positions of finance, with finance, not being with the finance department. We have staff performing these type of duties in other departments that don't report to the finance director that cause us issues with our audits. It makes no sense for that to be the case. So the biggest thing for me is to make sure hearing real information in regards to the performance of staff in some of these positions, to get that addressed, and it will come from unbiased source, so no one can say that someone's trying to pick on someone, or whatever the case may be, and we can address the issue. Unfortunately, some people have been here in years in these positions, and so people don't want to mess with them, but they need to be fixed. Also, I would say outside agencies, I know we talked about wastewater here for their refund, but the fact of the matter is outside agencies are hurting us as well. I did not mention, hear you guys mention the Beacon. I'm pretty sure it's in your document, I haven't gone through this whole stack just yet, but I would just say that the Beacon Theater and our business-like services, I've been a huge advocate of us trying to get the RFP that you came to present about for compliance risk file assessments done, to be able to address the groups that are holding us up and getting our audits done, in terms of not being able to have findings. There's four business-like enterprise accounts that have historically, since 2016, not been able to produce financial records, and those are key. You know, we can work on everything else, but if we keep skipping past them, at what point would they ever be able to get done? And so they just keep repeatedly, each year, keeping the bad practices in place, because we haven't addressed them, and so that's my other big thing. And my other thing I would say is stakeholders. I would like for council to consider us not deciding tonight, but a subsequent meeting on who exactly we appointed contacts. I have several concerns regarding this, because, one, I think communication should be with the mayor, vice mayor, and manager, not just the manager, for multiple reasons, not because of who she is, I support her fully, but in regards to making sure there's communication across the board. But then also, in terms of the finance committee, I don't support that being the only group that you're primarily working with. I think it should be all of council, straight from the jump. I don't think there should be separate meetings, for multiple reasons as well. Given to what got us here to this vote, the history of finance committee, I, I don't trust that situation, and then also in regards to experience and knowledge of history, it's not there, no disrespect to new members of council, but there are brand-new members of council who don't have the historical knowledge, and some of the issues that, with the previous auditors from the state, they did not interview all of council to get that historical knowledge of what has taken place in the past. I've served the finance committee for years, up until recently. I was mayor, I was vice mayor, I was on the investment committee, all these things, and not one time was I ever consulted to get any information about our finances. So I would say that there is a reason why some of us have not been included, and I want to just make sure we eliminate the opportunity for that to occur again, and so my recommendation would be, you talk to all of council with every single update, not the finance committee, and council decides after this is finished, how the finance committee shall proceed, in my opinion. And that's also because the finance committee, prior to now, honestly, wasn't a committee. Ms. Pelham and I were on it, and before this new assignment, and we had a hardest time meeting, getting information. The foreign administration would not give us information we asked for, we could not talk to the auditors, and so it's not like we have this historical trend to go back and refer to how we should operate. We have supported this new committee to be able to be in their roles, but there's nothing, no precedent, right? There's no structure for them to go off of, and so I think that that's important for us to try to build that for this new council, for this new group. And the last thing I'll say is, I would say that this is also a long time coming, to the words right out of my mouth, for those of us who actually understand what has taken place in the past and what has brought us here, we could have been doing this a long time ago to get the work done instead of talking, or assessing assessments, and, or falling for false promises in regards to having boots on the ground when they were never going to be delivered to us. And when you came here a couple of months ago to do this exactly the same thing, imagine we could have been done by now, and so it is unfortunate, but this is where we are. We're glad we're here, because maybe we would never have this powerhouse if we not gone through those trials and tribulations to get to where we are, so I think that's a blessing, and everything happens for a reason, so I'll just say that you have my full support, and that's why I want to make sure we eliminate all obstacles for you to be successful, because there are people who don't want you to be successful, let's just be honest, and we need to make sure that that's not the case, and they don't have the opportunity to try to create wedges, instead of building bridges for us to get out of this hole that we're in, so thank you for being here and helping us.
Thank you. I, I can say that, in our conversation with the city, with the city manager, that transparency is at the top of the, of the priorities, so that what we say to one, we say to all.
Yes.
So, absolutely.
And I'll say this last, I'm sorry. The thing is too, it's hard for some of us who are trying to do the right thing here to not respond to every single newspaper article, no disrespect to you, the Facebook posts, the lies that's been spread, there's so much misinformation circulating about our personal opinions, our positions, why we make the votes we did, what got us here, and unfortunately, we only have like one side putting out misinformation, and it's not, we're trying to focus on getting the work done, right? And so it helps when you make sure that everyone gets the information at the same time, so that way, we can all be prepared. I'm trying to still not respond to stuff, because I would rather show and prove, and that's why I'd rather put my support behind Mr. Terry, Dr. Manker, and your team, to be able to execute and just deliver the results, and let that speak for itself, and so, and people who know me know that it's not my MO, it must be because I have this baby right now, there's one inside of me who's trying to give me patience, but I would just say that, I think that's what we need to do, because without it, we're just going to keep bringing everybody down, and it's not, you can't speak on one side of your mouth, say we want to move forward, want to see it grow and prosper, and everybody heal, but then put out negative information, and so I think that it's just important for us to focus on the goal at hand and just come together to make you the most successful you can be.
Thank you for your support and your comments. I completely agree, and thank you for making our case as to why we need a project charter, why we need to identify appropriate stakeholders, and why we all need to agree on how we're going to communicate to each one of those stakeholders. So when I reach out to you, or someone on the team reaches out to you for your feedback on that, please be honest, and in our possession, we will be honest and transparent back with you. That's how we do our work.
Okay. Councilor Joyner, Holloway, and then myself.
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you all for being here this evening. I don't know who doesn't want you guys to be successful, I think anybody who loves the city should want you to be successful, and I know that I certainly want you to be successful. The one thing that I think comes out of all of this is, and you mentioned this earlier, Ms. Ness, cultural change, that is probably at the heart of a lot of what is, has been wrong for a long time, and that culture has produced this situation where we have people that have been underperforming, or maybe are not in the right places, have not been trained, et cetera, et cetera. There are multiple reasons why things have happened the way they have. The new kid on the block, I've been around, I do happen to be on the finance committee, but I do agree with Councilor Gore that, that there is not a template for the finance committee. I do think that that needs to be, you know, perhaps you can provide some guidance with regard to that. I also believe that the, that you should be in communication with far more people than just the finance committee, it's Mr. Harris and I. Communication, once again, that's cultural, and it, it's key to, to you being successful, to us. I mean, I think you all can come and do great things, but unless the culture changes, we're going to wind up in the same place that we are now in a few years, so that's why it's so critical for you to be here and do your thing. So the communication piece is really very, very important, and if we are going to be communicated with, as you're saying, then I, I don't have a problem at all. I think that if transparency is going to be the, the, sort of the state of things, then I think we'll be in great hands, and I, I look forward to some outstanding results, and thank you.
We just want to make sure that they all add a, culture each strategy, so...
Yes.
Culture each strategy, fabulous.
All right. Councilor Holloway?
I, I, everybody else has touched on some of the things that are like, but I, I kind of want to deviate to the side a little bit. What's your professional opinion, right now, we have a, what do you call it? We've put out to hire a financial director because we, we are in contract right now. What's your opinion on doing that in the midst of hiring a PMO and so forth to fix the current issues that we have? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think the city would be best served to have, you know, permanent employees with the requisite, with the requisite skills to perform, and qualifications, and, you know, it, it, you don't want to have a, I mean, we can't have a municipality that's run by consultants, right? So you need to have permanent staff with skills, experience, whom you can hold accountable, and if they aren't performing, then they're the back window, the back door, and so, you know, I'm an advocate for, if you have a vacancy, then you can have someone come in to fill that vacancy on a, on a, on a temporary basis.
Yes, sir.
But you need to get, you need to have an active recruitment, and then what makes your recruitment process well is, you know, what is your salaries, what are your benefits? Because the market is very competitive.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you that I'm aware of, let me see, Rocky Mountain just hired a finance director, Fussburg is looking for a finance director, Dumfries just hired a director of finance. These directors of finance positions are becoming very rare, and so, and I don't want to speak to director of finance, I want to speak to all.
Correct.
You can't, the, the city manager will have a recruitment process, there's a need for assistant city manager, some of these other positions, but they have to be permanent, full-time, committed employees on a mission to help the city advance its mission, and then they have to be held accountable. If they're not held accountable, they're out the door.
Yep, I agree. Thank you so much for your comment.
Just for clarification, were you asking him, should we continue the advertisement, or, or is it just a general question?
No, so I, I, being that the state that we're in...
No, my, 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 I'm sorry, I missed the point, but if you're advertising for a finance director, you should continue that advertisement.
Yeah, yeah.
For a permanent position.
Okay.
No, it doesn't mean that the incumbent who may be acting can't, or can't apply, anyone can apply, but I, I like the fact that I'm just a financing budget guy, right? So I want my budget directive permanent, I want my finance directive permanent, I want to be, I mean, I want those individuals to be tied to my hips.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. I have five questions, but you've already answered four of them. Which is great. The only, the only remaining question that I had is when reading through your technical proposal, you mentioned in there that you won't be looking for fraud, or like embezzlement, but if you see indicators of that, you know, are you, you're going to report that to the city manager and the council, correct? Okay. I just want to make sure.
I want to answer that, I want to answer that question.
I just want to make sure, I mean, I just want to make sure.
I would like to answer that question this way. I, I don't know if you know my reputation, right? So where there's waste, fraud, and abuse, those individuals are prosecuted. If we find it, and that individual is close to the city manager, or close to someone like a council person, no, we're not going to tell you. We're going straight to the US Attorney's Office, we're going to some police office, because we want to make sure that there's not a chain there, so I just, I mean, that's the way we work.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
I like that much better.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only remaining question that I had. Councilor Denton?
Mr. Reagan, I remember when you were here the last time, and we were, you were interviewing with us, you mentioned that you would not leave here until everybody knew their job. So is my understanding still that you will come in here and train our employees that we have now, so that when you're no longer here, they can do the job?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's going to be critical, the way that Heather described, maybe Heather should come up and talk a little bit more in detail, but in, in, in my experience, you know, part of what we have to do on a project like this is to train those folks on what the new state is, what, you know, so any of the things that have been done in the past that get changed, they'll need to get trained up on, and that's integral to our, our approach.
So I've heard some keywords here, cultural change, and I've heard training of every person's job, I've heard making sure people are in the right job, that's all part of it, right? When you talk about organizational design, you're not only assessing policies and procedures, you're assessing the people who are putting on and actually accomplishing those policies and procedures, and I don't want to scare anyone, right? If they don't have the right skill set to do a particular policy and procedure here, they may have that skill set to do it over here, right? So we're not necessarily, you know, it may be a reshuffle, it may also be a training situation, and yes, there will be other situations, but we, one of the things that, I don't know if you saw Jack whisper in my ear when we were going through these questions, is the idea of a monitoring control, so that when we leave, things are reassessed, monitored, updated, so that you guys are successful going forward. Your people are a huge part of that. If we leave here without training your people, and the right people in the right job, and those people are also accepting the change, we will walk right out and everything goes back, and the markers of key success for long-term restructure and long-term change is when the organization is successful, when we put ourselves out of a job, and that is the best way to do it, is assessing skill sets, assessing training. I'm not a beat-around, you're just getting to know me, I'm not a beat-around-the-bush kind of gal, I'm going to say it like it is, and, and we're going to deal with it like it is, and we're going to have to train that way, too.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gore, that's where, what you said earlier about the internal audit risk and compliance warmed my heart. You know, to me, the steps for where the city is today, fix the old data, get all those old audit reports current, fix and train everybody up on better policies, procedures, processes. That's what you've got here, and then the last step to that, that comes out of that, is you have that monitoring control that sits on top of it, and make sure that those policies and procedures and processes that you've implemented... that you've implemented are adhered to. They don't deteriorate because if you don't have that monitoring control, things may tend to, I call it entropy, right? It just sort of starts, you know, getting discombobulated again. So I think that the first two steps through this project that the city has taken are the ones that absolutely need to get done. Fix the old stuff, create the new state, and then as we're going through this, one of the things that we start talking about is, okay, so then how do you monitor that all of those new controls that have been put in place through that first work stream continue to operate effectively? I think that's going to be critical at the end of this. We'll be thinking about it throughout, but to have those, those controls in place by the end of this project to sustain the change is going to be absolutely critical.
Yeah, my final comment is for the members of the city council to give the city manager whatever leeway that she needs to create a high-performing organization. A high-performing organization starts with talent management, starts with HR. So I don't know what the plan is yet, hopefully we'll find out, but city manager will be really successful when she has the leeway and the support of city council as she comes forward with improving HR, to create a high-performing organization, or going out and bringing in the right talent, to have good policies in place, to have a strong salary and benefit program. I have no idea what that is currently, but there are a lot of cities out there that are competing for talent. And so to create a high-performing organization, she's going to need your support, whatever program she brings, comes with regarding salaries, benefits, and talent. That's just my editorial comment. Thank you very much for.
We just got a couple more that have questions.
Oh, more questions, okay.
Before we do a second round, we have Counselor Harris.
I just have a couple of comments. One is I appreciate the presentation by the Robert Bob Group, and I also wanted to let you know that, Mr. Bob, I am familiar with your rep. That's all I have.
All right, Vice Mayor Gore, then Councilor Denton?
Just to make sure I'm tracking, the KPIs are going to be in the chart, what you call it, the.
Charter.
Charter, okay. You said what?
Tell a public what a KPI is, I hate it.
It's like key priorities types of goals. Key performance indicators. OKRs? Like, yeah, same thing, but yes, talk in your language. So, yeah, it's going to be in the charter doc, got it? So then the other thing I would say, thank you so much. Okay.
I will say that we'll probably build on that as a bigger organization. Some data that may not be available at the beginning when we're done may be available, and then you guys will know.
Okay, got it. Yes, okay. And, and then thank you for the comments about the monitoring, that makes so much sense. I appreciate that. I think the other key thing is as you're going through this process, if you have, you know, you have the change curve, you know, you got to get everybody to come in, and there's going to be people crying, fighting, kicking, screaming, then you give them that grace period to get it out. And then you, when they get past the grace period, then it's like, okay, let's, let's go. Once you get past whatever that, that marker is, and you still have resistance, that needs to be communicated because we don't have time to keep trying to deal with people who don't want to change. And like Councilor Joyner said, it is a culture adjustment, it's going to be a lot for a lot of people, but we honestly just don't have the time for it anymore. It's past due, they had enough time to kind of figure out that this train was coming and to decide what they wanted to do. So don't waste your time trying to figure out, you know, how to make it work with some, those who may be difficult.
Understood, but if I may address that for a moment? One of the ways, and sometimes I will, I will coach to flip the coin, and I'm going to do that right now. The way to flip that coin is when we are working on culture change for an organization, it is just as important to understand why you have resistance. And in some large government organizations where I have found some success is actually taking the people who hate me the most, understanding what they are, and enrolling them as change champions to roll forward. So we'll try to identify that first before we do the latter.
Give them a chance, but I'm just saying, after the chance, be not sticking, try to keep chanting them. And the other thing is just to be clear, Dr. Manker, we see the treasurer is in the back, she's smiling throughout the presentation. And so, you know, some of the obstacles we have with the former administration was the treasurer's office and there being differences of opinion, not being able to work together. And so I know it's different with Shannon, but I would say kind of what we're talking about with some of these key things that we have to do, we, her office and the schools to be on board, we don't control the schools. So it's Dr. Hackney and Shannon's office on board to have them come in to do the work at the same time, letting you guys lead that project and be in the background, kind of, yeah. And you talk to the schools, Shannon's shaking her head, so I don't know what Dr. Hackney's saying.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get them on board.
Now, we had a conversation with Dr. Hackney about this.
Yes.
You did?
Yes, she knows it's coming down, but we'll circle back.
Okay.
To let her know that we've selected someone and we're moving forward.
Okay, but she's committed to being a part of this project?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so that makes sure. Because, no, it's a key thing because they had issues with their staffing, they had issues with their reporting, and we don't control that, and we hadn't had a resolution. So as the diversity is saying, I'm a part of it versus executing. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page there with that as well. Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on one second, Councilor Denton, and then yourself.
I just didn't, while ago, I didn't quite finish. I wanted to thank you all for coming tonight and explaining what you were going to do. I guess my last question, are you starting tonight or are you going to wait in the morning, till in the morning?
Well, someone told me about a 10-day waiting period.
The earliest they can start is the August the 16th. We have a 10-day period according to our procurement rules. There's some legal things we have to abide by.
Right.
All right, so the band starts playing August the 16th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Rest assured, we will be prepared.
Trump major.
All right, Councilor Holloway?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the funding amount of $988,680 for the PMO and accounting remediation services to be provided by the Robert Bob Group.
Second. And I have a friendly amendment to my second. Can you say the location of the funds, please? I'm just.
Uh, to, yes, thank you for that. Absolutely to be taken from the ARPA funds.
All right, you also need to add to the motion to direct the city manager.
To execute.
To execute and enter into the contract on behalf of the city.
As stated by the city manager.
So you accept this friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, you accept him? Okay. There ain't discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Councilor Harris. Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pellam?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Roll call, please. Well, all in favor, say aye.